Once again, the Lord has given the promise to meditate the motor verse of this year.
Parak sari, moto kardaka vaadhana milanu devu dhyani chinatila manaka avakashmi chintnadu.
Once again, we will all together read the promise, motor promise of this year.
Marakari, isamvatsarama yekka moto kardanani avadhana milanu manam dhyani chukuntam.
The first evil of all to Thessalonians.
Apostol Danapauli Thessaloniki lakkiraasna twenty thirty.
Chapter five, verse twenty-three.
Aido adhyayam, iruvay mura vachnam.
All together we will read.
Andram kalisadukunnamandi?
One Thessalonians, five twenty-three, all together we will read.
Moditi Thessalonika?
Five, chapter five, verse twenty-three.
Aido adhyayam, iruvay mura vachnamo andram kalisadukunnam.
And the very God of peace sanctified.
Samadhana karteegu devu dey, immu samponamga parshita parshugam gaka. Nea atma yujivam, immu sheriram, immu pravaneesu priestu raakadhi endu nindharan. Samponamga no undunatlu kaapada badhundu gaka.
Second promise.
Enda vaadhana mo?
John's Gospel, chapter fourteen.
Yohan swarta padnala gathya.
Verse twenty-seven, all together we will read.
Iruvay yedha vachnamani andram kalisadukunnam.
John's Gospel, fourteen twenty-seven, all together we will read.
Yohan swarta padnala gathya, iruvay yedha vachnamani kuda andram kalisadukuntam.
Peace I leave with you.
Shanti mekanu granchu vandichunnu.
My peace I give unto you.
Na shanti mekanu granchu vandichunnu. Neither the world give us. Lo kamichinatika nee mekanu granchu vandichunnu. Neither the world give us. Nee devu kalavara padani yekkudi, veruva yekkudi.
Neither let it be afraid. Third promise.
Mudavahagamo?
Romans, the book of Romans.
Romiela krasnapathrika.
Chapter sixteen.
Padharavadhyayam.
Verse twenty.
Iruvay yavachnam.
Sixteen twenty Romans.
Romiela krasnapathrika, padharavadhyayam, iruvay yavachnam kuda andram kalisi chadukunnam. Samadhana karteegu devu, saatanu me kaaalakirinda, sigramu gaan chittukadrukkinchino.
May the Lord bless this word and speak with us currently from the drawing of praise.
Devu, yu vaathla baavamni devinchi, tanakrupaasimhasanamudi, yedde tekka manatho maathla dunduka.
One Thessalonians, five twenty. Five twenty-three says like this.
Madhrit Thessalonika, aido adhyayam, iruvay mura vachnamlo, ilaga rai budunthunadi.
As we meditated in the early morning, the peace of God purifiers or sanctifiers.
Manaveku jaavna dhyani chukuntu vachnatila, devu neyaka samadhana mo, manalukshuddi jeseediga, pratistinchedi gaunthu ostundi.
Why it is doing like that?
Indu kaalava chesundhi?
Because we should be present before our Lord.
Indu kante, manamu devu neyadita niluva badhalani?
We are not for this world. We are not for... Baba. Thank you, Baba. We are not for the people of this world.
Indu kante, manamu yeloka samvandala korukukaadu?
We are the people of heaven, of eternity.
Manamu paraloka samvandalamu, manamu nitya thomnaku chendinvaru.
Being we are believers, we have the hope, living hope or blessed hope in our life, that Lord is going to appear one day in the middle, we will meet him.
Vishvasvallamana manakunna twenty mirikshinandite, mana prabhu okanaka dinamuna raane uddu, madhyaakashmana manamayani yedirkunnaayum.
Who were sanctified through him, who worries that is prepared himself for the coming of the Lord, they will be caught up with him and they will spend their lifelong time with our Lord Jesus Christ in heaven.
Yevrethe pratistinchabadina varuga untaro, varu madhyaakashmana konupovadna varame, vara yin nityamo, prabhu thokuda sadakalam unnaayunna.
The second Thessalonians, first Thessalonians, second Thessalonians, if you see, these churches, they are preparing themselves for the coming of the Lord.
Irenda Thessalonika sangavalo unna varu, prabhu raakalukorukaayi varu tamunutamusiddha parchukuntu ostunadu.
They have the right intention or concept about the coming of the Lord, but their preparation was not proper, that's what Paul supposed to write two episodes to the Thessalonians.
Thessalonika ilaku, renda vasari pathrika royals ochin, indu kante, varu yekka siddha partu sari ga ledhukanuka.
The Thessalonians, the Bible history says like that.
Bible cherithra ilaga chappavudundhi.
So the people of the, that is the Thessalonians, they will be waiting for the Lord and daily they will be going to the terrace with white dresses and they will be related to the heaven where the Lord is coming.
Thessalonika lannu viswasalu, varu prathidinamu kuda, ayaka middalameedike venli, prabhu yeppe roostadaani varu paike chuse, alagu veechu chuse varani, Bible panditil yaptar.
That desire may be, the concept may be good, but going with white dress and going into the terrace and looking into the heaven means we will never be caught up with him.
At talambu manchide kani, varu yedda telanvasrala dherinchukani, alagu middalameedike venli, alagu yedru chuchita dhara, prabhu raakadha madham jargadu kada?
But how we can take off or how we will be with a lot of varu, how can we prepare ourselves?
Aite, manalunu manamu yelaga siddha parchukgalamu?
Here, what he says.
Ikka reenchappavudthavundhi?
The God of peace sanctify you holy.
Samadhana karteegu devu dey, immu samponamga siddha parchunuka.
I pray to God, your whole spirit and soul and body be preserved blameless unto coming of our Lord Jesus Christ. Same, I pray to God, pray God, your whole spirit and soul and body be preserved blameless unto the coming of our Lord Jesus Christ. Twenty-seven, twenty-three, sorry, five twenty-three, one Thessalonians.
One Thessalon, madhrit Thessalonika, aido adhyayam, iruvay mura vachnamlo, adhe bhagamlo ondhi kada? Samadhana karteegu devu dey, immu samponamga parshita parchunuka, me atma yujivam, immu sheriram, immu pravaneesu priestu raakadhi endu, nindharaitamugana samponamga no undunatlu kaapada badhunduka.
How the sanctification?
Pratichaparchavada, prakriya elaga jantundhi?
Completely holy.
Samponamga, puurtiga jantundhi?
Your body, soul and spirit.
Me atma, sheriram, jivam.
The perfect sanctification is essential.
Isamponamayana pratichaparchavada edanidi, entena ausrama intanat?
That's what he is saying.
Devu neyaka chittundu kada?
For that he is preserving them and presenting them blameless before the Lord.
Daanikorukaayi varani devu siddhapurastha unnadu, devu neyadita, nindharaituluka niluva pettalaani, alagu siddhapurastha unnadu.
So that's what, what the Lord is giving this promise of this year, that is by the peace of God, daily we have to sanctify and we have to come to the process of the purification in our day to day life.
Akaranbate, devu yu vaadhana milanu manakarugreenchinadu entente, manamu prathidinamu kuda, yu samadhana parchavada edi, leeda shuddi parchavada yep, prakriya gunna, mana velthu raval.
This is not a one day process.
Idheeda okadinamu jargi parakriya.
Till the coming of the Lord, we have to be sanctified, sanctified and we have to purify ourselves, purge ourselves from the worldly infirmities or the defilement.
Prabhu yekka raakadhar kuda, manamu prathidinamu kuda, yeloka maaliyavu mana kantakunda, prathidinamu kuda, manalukshuddi chinchukuntu, parshita parchukuntu raval.
Under the second promise.
Enda vaadhana mo?
John's Gospel, chapter fourteen, verse twenty-seven.
Yohan swarta padnala gathya, iruvay yedha vachnam.
John's Gospel, fourteen twenty-seven.
Yohan swarta padnala gathya, iruvay yedha vachnamo?
What the Lord says here?
Akka prabhu emantnadu?
My peace I leave unto thee.
Na shanti nee me kanugreenchinunadu?
My peace I give unto you.
Na shanti nee me kanugreenchinunadu?
Neither the world give us.
Lo kamichinatika, nee me kanugreenchitle edh.
But let not your God be troubled, neither let it be afraid.
Me hru devamnu kalavara padani yekkudi, veruva yekkudi?
So in this world, if you see.
Yu vachnamlo manam justhe?
So gold is giving, peace also.
Lo kamkuda shanti stundhi?
Along with the peace.
A shanti thopadu?
Trouble and afraid.
Kalavaramu, bhayamnu kuda istundhi?
The circumstances of fear and trouble will come along with the worldly peace.
Lo kassamvandamayana shanti thopadu, shramalu, kalavaraal kuda yediravatay?
But God is giving his own peace.
Aite, devu, tanasamadhana ney manakistunadu?
What is his peace?
Aina samadhana venti?
It is not peace of this world.
Adi yeloka samvandamayana edh gada?
It is not as the world giver.
Lo kamichinatika, nee me kanugreenchitle edh ante?
But it is God's peace.
Indu kante, yidhi devuni samadhana?
He is the prince of God.
Devu samadhana karta ga unnadu?
He is the source of peace.
Aina samadhana lo ku moodamayunthunadu?
Through his peace only, we will have or we will be the proper peace in our life.
Yu samadhana mo dhvaraane, manamu nizamayana, sariyena samadhana ney karigundakalutham?
We can, we can escape from all the troubles and trials of this world.
Yelokamlo yedra, yeshramalu, shodanalu, vidhanneetini kuda, manamu tapichkogalutham?
It will deliver us from all the fear in our life.
Abi mana jivitala unde, bhayamla, annetinudi thura parstundhi?
So this is the God's, that is the peace.
Idhi devuni samadhana?
Through him only, we have to receive.
Aina dhvaraane manam dhanne bundukogal.
My peace means, what is the meaning? He is the source of the peace.
Na shanti kada, devu dey shanti ki moodamayunthunadu?
He is, my peace means, what the Lord says, I am the source of all peace.
Pravaneesu priestu antinadu kada, samastashamadhana mo nakushanti ke neenekartanantinadu?
But in all your circumstances, all your fearful condition, troubleful, trouble condition, in your afflictions, my peace will be sufficient to thee.
Ne paristhitlannitlo, neyaka ibbandalanitlo, neyaka kalavaramu lannitlo, pada devu neyemantnadu, na samadhana ney kanugreenchinunadu?
So let the peace of God may deliver us from all the worldly fearful status and trouble condition.
Kaavati, yu samadhana karteegu devu, lo kassamvandamayana prathik kalavara paristhitundhi, prathibhayamundhi, manakvidhalanu greenchinuka?
Third one.
Rendamudodi?
Romans, chapter sixteen.
Romiela krasnapathrika, padharavadhyayam.
And verse twenty, we read.
Iruvay mura vachnamo manam chadukunnamo?
God of peace, guru is shut under your feet shortly.
Samadhana karteegu devu, saatanu sigramu ga, me kaaalakirinda, chittukadrukkinchino.
Satan is going to be bruised by the peace of God.
Saatanu samadhana karteegu devu ney chetta, chittukadrukkinchabadhunadu?
The peace of God going to do, going to perform such a greatest work through us in this world.
Devu ney samadhana mo, yelokamlo, mana dhara, atu antikriya jerginchinayunadu?
So let us enjoy the peace in our life, in the whole year and let us daily purify and paper us for the coming of the Lord and some of the situations, fearful condition may disturb our peace, the Lord may be deliver us from all the fearful condition and trouble.
Kaavati, yelokamlo, mana atu antid devu chetvanti, sampona shanti ney, mana anubhavistu, prathidinamu mana dainanidu jivitala, kalavaramalu, shodanalu, shramalu yedirayapudu, a shanti galigina varame, mana vattina, annetini adhikamichi, jivinchalani devu koorthunadu?
In this morning time, Lord wanted to, that is each and every one of our life, that is we have to inherit such a peace in our life.
Yuvade kaalavu gadiyala, devu manandarki neerputanu, neerputanu dandite, manamu itu antisamadhana ney, mana hru devu lala kaligundali?
Do you have experience, do you have such a great use in your life?
Ne jivitala itu antigoppa samadhana ney ikunda?
So Lord is saying, the word of God says.
Kaavati, devu neyaka chittundhi?
Isaiah fifty-seven, verse twenty-one.
Asia gandam yaba yedha vachnam, iruvay yedha vachnamo?
Fifty-seven, twenty-one, Isaiah.
Asia gandam yaba yedha vachnamo, iruvay yedha vachnamo?
What are you seeing here?
Ikka reemravundunthu?
There is no peace, said my Lord, to the wicked.
Duschilaka nemadhi unnadu, na devu dey salavichchunadu?
Yevreki neyamadi unnadu?
Yevreki neyamadi unnadu?
Dushtarago.
Duschilaka?
So wicked people will not have the peace.
Kaavati, duschilaka nemadhi unnadu?
Because no God means no peace at all.
Indu kante, devu leka potte, samadhana mo shanti unnadu?
Outside the God, there is no peace.
Devu ney kvelupala, etu anti shanti ledhu?
If you want peace, you need, that is a, you need, that is God in our life.
Ne kushanti kavalantene, ne jivitala, ne tapakad devu ney kaligundali?
Don't make peace with all, with us initially by sending his begotten son.
Devu, tanapriyakumari dhanupanti, esu priestu pravani, yelokamnu nakupampichunadu dhara, a shanti ney devu manaki chintunadu?
The son who came to this world and died on the cross of Calvary and said his precious blood, through that he killed the enemy and he made a peace with us.
Yelokamnu nakuppravane esu priestu varu ochidu dhara, aina silvalo, kaarchina rattham dhara, aina shethru ga unnaantvanti, a bhavamnu chedraguti, devu samadhana mo manakarugreenchinunadu?
If there is sin in our life, we cannot enjoy the peace of God in our life.
Mana jivitala paabo unnatlai, mana devuni samadhana ney mana anubhavinchalim?
One Corinthians, chapter fourteen, verse twenty-seven says.
Madhrit Korinti padnala gathya, iruvay yedha vachnamlo ondhi kada?
God has called us unto peace.
Devu manalunu samadhana mo kaligundaniki pilichadu?
Not for the conflict or strife.
Yedho jagadamlo, poratamlo kaligundanikada?
God is the peace of God who called us for his grace, for his peace.
Devu samadhana karteegu devu ga unnadu, samadhana mo kaligundanikama manalipilichadu?
Second Thessalonians, three sixteen says.
Irenda Thessalonika, mudavahagamo, padharavachnamlo ondhi?
Peace is the gift of God.
Samadhana manidi devuni varamu?
Second chapter, Thessalonians, chapter three, sorry. Ah, me kusamadhana anugreenchinuka ka? What is the meaning?
Samadhana manugreenchinuka, aarde venti?
He is the provider of, he is the gift of our peace.
Aene manaku samadhana mayantinadu?
Peace is the gift of God, peace is from gift of God.
Devu ney yekka varamu entente, devu chetvanti samadhana?
So if you are not having such a gift in our life, our life will be based to how long we are living in this world.
Mana jivitala itu antisamadhana mo leka potte, mana yelokamlo enta karam jivinchina kuda yarthame?
One Peter.
Churande moditi pethuru?
Verse four, chapter five.
Aido adhyayam.
Fourteen says like that.
Padnala vachnamlo ilaga rai budunthunadi?
One Peter, five fourteen.
Madhrit pethu, aido adhyayam, padnala vachnamo?
Ah, it's sad. Hmm, what are you seeing here?
Ikka rai budinante?
What he is saying is, peace be with all that are in Jesus Christ, Jesus amen.
Priestunandhanna me kandarikini samadhana mo kaligunduka, amen.
Yevreki peaceo?
Yevreki samadhana mo?
Yevreki samadhana?
Yevreki?
That is all, that are all in Christ Jesus.
Priest esunandhunnavarki?
Those who are in Christ, such a people only can experience or they can ingere the peace of God in our life.
Yevreite, priestlo unnavaruga untnarao, varu madhamayi yisamadhana mo shanti ney, swadandrichukani lo kavala jivinchakal.
Outside the God, outside that is the Christ, we will never enjoy, we cannot see the real joy or see peace in our life.
Devu ney kvelupala, priestu kvelupala, nijamayana shanti, samadhana mo, mana enta matram anubhavinchalim?
So in the whole Bible, if you see.
Kaavati, Bible antetla manam justhe?
More than one seventy times recorded the translation of the word peace.
Yekka, praischittamnu koo, praischittakaramayana mata, samadhana maney mata, dadapuganu notadevasaalu rai budinunthunadi?
Samadhana, salim, can't free from conflict, no war, no strife, like these words related to pertaining to the word peace, it is recorded one seventy times.
Ilaga samadhana mo, shanti, shalemo, poratam leekunduta, jagadam leekunduta, yu ilaga samvandichinavani kuda, yuvane shanti ki samvandichinavi, yu dadapuganu notadevai parvayamnu rai budinunthunadu?
So there is two motor also, we can see, we have to have the peace of God in our life.
Kaavati, yirando moto kardanlo kuda, devu chetvanti samadhana maney mata manam justavostam?
Many things may come and disturb the peace of God in our life.
Mana jivitala aneka sangavalo ochi, manalukkalavara parchavachu?
Satan also will not, that is tolerate, that is we are leading a peaceful life.
Ne samadhana karamayana jivitala jivinchina jiviste, saatanu varu ematram tattukalidu?
Somewhat he want, he will disturb our us, destroy our peace from our life.
Yedho laguna mana jivitala kalavara parchi, mana jivitala shanti leekundachestadu?
Somewhat he will, that is take away the peace, he will try to take away the peace which Lord given in our life.
Yedho laguna, prabhu chetvanti shanti, samadhana manidi, mana jivitala leekundatiisvestadu?
In such a condition, how can I have the peace of God in my life?
Atu antiparisthitlo, nee no devu neyaka samadhana ney elaga kaligundakal.
In order to remain at the peace of God in my life, what I have to do?
Na hru devamlo devu neyaka samadhana mo nilichu unnadu, nee ney chavalsindhanti?
One, three things we will see in this morning time and we will close it.
Yuvade kaalavu samvamlo, moody vishyalu manam chuskane, buvinchukuntam?
In the book of Judges.
Niyadipathala gandamu?
We can see, no, those days and all, no kings and all to rule them, many judges, they lord brought them and aroused them and through them lord reigned their people.
Kaavati, niyadipathala kalamlo, yeh raju kuda ledhugani, devu, niyadipathalana lepi, varu dhara, israeli prajalaku tirupu tiristochet?
The book of Judges.
Niyadipathala gandamu?
Chapter six.
Aro adhyayam.
Verses twenty-three and twenty-four.
Iruvay mura, iruvay naal vachnal.
Ah, what are, ah, what are you seeing here?
Ikka manameenjustunadu?
Jehovah shalom.
Akka, yehova samadhana karta?
This is the first time recorded in the Bible.
Idhi motta moditi sari ga, Bible rai budinamata?
God is the peace.
Devu dey samadhana?
God is my peace.
Devu na samadhana?
Jehovah shalem, yahweh my peace.
Yehovash samadhana mo?
This is the word first, first recorded here.
Yimata, motta moditi sari ga, ikka rasiyunchadu?
And even the angel of God promised to Gideon also, twenty-third verse, peace be unto thee, fear not, thou shalt not die.
Yehova, yehova dutha, gideonitha vaadhana chesu, iruvay mura vachnamlo, apuyehova, ney kusamadhana mo baidakumo, ney vichavani athritha salavichinu?
The angel of God promised unto Gideon that is the peace when he was in fearful condition.
Gideon, bhayamutha apudina paristhitlo unnapudu, yehova dutha, thani kivaadhana chesunadu, entente, samadhana mani?
Those days or in these days of the, during the days of the Gideon, when we see, media and eyes, the people, they were overcome the people of Israelites and whatever the things they have cultivated and whatever the things and all, they will take and they will go.
Adinallo, gideonu kalamlo, israelu, varu avidanga jivistochetapudu, varu yetuk shethru lo ochi, varu veddaadi chesu, varu yeta unnavatna neti tiskunbaya varu?
So in order to protect his possession and whatever he cultivated, what he did, in the night time, he was in the threshing hole, a land, and he is harvesting all whatever grown in his field.
Kaavati, taanu polamlo yevaiita pandistochet, vaadi minnoochu kallamudigira, vaadannetni kuda taanu jaagreta paristu, bhayamutha unthu ochet?
That time what happened?
A samvamlo injirigindi?
The Lord is appear unto him.
Yehova gideonuku pratikshma?
What he did?
Ee mandadu?
Verse twenty, six twenty.
Aro adhyayam, iruvay yedha vachnamlo?
Ah, fourteen to one, if you see, if you see from the fourteen verse.
Padnala vachnamundhi kuda manam chusthe?
Say enough, don't want to know. So we can see the conversation between the angel of God and Gideon.
Ikka, yehova dutha, kula gideonuku mati jergina sambashna ney manam chudavachu?
He is saying, oh mighty valiant, the Lord is with you, he is saying.
Taan antinadu, paratra magamugala baladu daan antinadu?
But what, there is a Gideon, so like this, the conversation are going, I am not going to deter all those things.
Ilaga sambashna anta jaru dina, ivralani nee chappadledu?
But Gideon wanted to offer something to the angel of God.
Aite, gideonu, yehova dutha, kedu kunda ivalan kunadu?
And he brought some of the things and all from his floor and other things and all, and he brought to the angel of God to offer.
Kaavati, yehova dutha kichitaku, amam samu nu, pongani bakshamilana patukani, yehova dutha degare tiskunochet?
Verse twenty, what he says?
Iruvay vachnamlo, eem antinadu?
He is given proper instruction, how we have to offer.
Taanu yelaga arpinchalo, sariyena twenty suchena, akka rai budunthunadi?
After that only, we can see Jehovah shalom.
Atu tarvathane, yehova samadhana mo manam chudakalutham?
So Gideon received the proper instruction from the angel of God.
Kaavati, gideonu, yehova dutha undi, sariyena suchena ney di chustochet?
So from this, what we understand?
Neendu varu mana eem arudam chuskal.
Where is the Jehovah shalom? How can we ingere the peace in our life?
Mana jivitala, yehova samadhana mo, ane paristhitlannu yelaga lagal?
How the peace of God will come to our whole life?
Devu ney samadhana mo, mana hru devamnu kela gostundhi?
By the instruction of God.
Devu neyaka suchena dhara?
By obeying to the instruction of God.
Devu neyaka upadesha manaku vidheta chupichunadu dhara?
By doing according to the instruction of God.
Devu neyaka upadesha prakaramga chayudadhara?
When we do like that?
Alagu chesinabudu?
Then the peace of God will rule our life.
Devu neyaka samadhana mo, mana hru devamnu yelito ostundhi?
The instruction of God gives peace to us.
Yehova upadesha manidi, mana kusamadhana mistundhi?
The God of God which is giving peace to us.
Devu ney vaakyammo mana kusamadhana mistundhi?
That's what Isaiah prophecy is writing.
Pravachanamuka, Asia ilaga rastunadu kada?
Isaiah forty-eight, eighteen.
Asia gandammo, nalabayani vathyayam, padhanyidavachnamo?
Ah, what are you seeing here?
Ikka reemjustunadu?
Thou heard, hear it to my commandments, then had thy peace been as your river.
Nee unna agnalu, aalakimpavallani, nee rentho koruchunadu, aalakinchinayedala, neekshemamu, nadivalenu, neenithi samodhratarangamulavallenu?
If you obey to the commandment of God.
Mana devu ney vaakyani vidheta chupiste?
If you hear the commandment of God.
Devu neyaka agnaku mana lowbadite?
If you do according to the word of God.
Devu ney vaakyaprakaramga manam cheste?
Then how would be our peace?
Apdu mana samadhana mo yelaga untadi?
Our peace be in as your river.
Mana samadhana mo nadivalay unthundhi?
How the river?
Nadivalay unthadi?
It will be running, the water will be running, it will never be stagnant.
A neeru yeppe tiki parutune unthak, okuchotan nilakadu ga unnadu?
So what is the meaning?
Daan ardevanti?
It will be refreshed, it will be new to us.
Mana kuvadi taaja ga, nootanamana vithanavalo kana padthavostadu?
The peace God we receive will be daily fresh in our life.
Mana bundukunna samadhana manidi, prathidinamu kuda, taaja ga unthundhi?
Because whenever, whenever we are approaching the word of God or how much we are spending the time with the word of God, such a things giving the great peace like a river peace, we are enjoying.
Indu kante, apraidha mana devu vaakyamto samvam, samvam gaddupthamo, devu neyto sahavasam chesthamo, itu antisamadhana mo, nadivalay pravachaycha samadhana mo mana hru devamnu kustundhi?
How many times we read the word of God, again and again we are reading, it is giving the new revelation to us.
Enni maal, devu vaakyamnu marala, marala manam chaduthu ochinabudu, adhi mana kuvanootanamayana vithanavalo pratiksheta kaligundastundhi?
But very tragedy in our life, we are not giving much time to the word of God.
Aite, mana jivitala vishadakarana paristhitentente, devu ney vaakyamnu kuma mana samvam eedh, eedam ledh?
People who are called them, I am so and so, so many yes believer in this so and so assembly.
Yen, pachal antar kada, neenu palana samajamlo, inni samvatsrala gayanu viswasyanu chippundu unthadu?
Innisamvastramlo ikkrenene unnadu?
Innisamvatsrala gayanu ikkre unnadu?
Ikkre yeldhuka unnadu?
Ikkre peddaga unnadu?
So ikkre regularga ostanu?
Ikkrikramanga ostanu?
All these things they say.
Yu vishyalani chettundu?
But if you ask them.
Varu nadukite?
How many times you have finished the Bible means not even one time?
Enni maal, Bible puurti jesaarandi aanadu, kani sam okasari vada puurti jasundadu?
It is not fair in the sight of the God.
Devu ney drishtiki, idhi sariyena edh gada?
If you are not spending much time in the word of God, then you cannot enjoy the real peace of God in our life.
Devu ney vaakyamutha ikku asamvamunu ney gada palaikapote, devu ney samadhana mo mana kaligundale?
Whenever we come to the word of God.
Devu ney vaakyam chetvaku mana ochinabudella?
We are getting the teaching, we are getting the teaching of the God.
Mana devu ney dhara bodinchabadham?
We are receiving the instruction from the God.
Devu ney vaakyamunandi upadesha manu bondhutam?
We are receiving the counsel from the Lord.
Devu neyunandi aalochina bondhutam?
We are receiving, that is the decision, resolution from the Lord.
Devu ney yedhanudi, mana kusuchanalu, upadesha manu bondhukuntu ostam?
We receive the guidance of the God.
Devu ney yedhanudi, nadukudala bondukuntam?
Many things we are giving, receiving.
Aneka vishyalu mana bondukuntunadu?
So through that, we will receive the peace of God in our life.
Daanidhvara, mana jivitala, devu ney samadhana ney mana podukgal.
The God of God which is giving peace in our life.
Kaavati, devu ney vaakyammo, mana jivitala, mana hru devamnu kusamadhana ney dai chesundhi?
Leviticus.
Leviakandamu?
Chapter twenty-six. Leviticus chapter twenty six. Leviticus. Three. What is here? Third verse. If you walk in my status and keep my commandments and do them. Four five verses what it says. Many blessings are regarded here. Whereby sixth verse what it says. I will give peace in the land. I will give the peace in this land. When we will have the peace. When we obey to the government of God. When we walk according to the status or commandment of God. Along with the all godly blessings, Lord is grant us the peace also. So let us this year spend much time in the word of God. Psalm one one nine. One sixty five. One sixty five, yes. Who love the Lord with have the great peace, it is regarding to English. Great peace have thy, they which love thy law and nothing shall offend them. When we love the commandments of God. When we receive the instruction of God. The great peace will be ours. God's peace will be ours. First of us, what we learn? How can we receive the peace of God in our life? From the life of Gideon, what we are learning, he, how he received the instruction. The same manner when we receive from the instruction from our Lord, we will have such a peace in our life. And the same thing what you are seeing? Judges, chapter six, verse twenty three twenty four. According to the instruction of the God, or angel of God, what he did, he built an altar. Altar is one of the important thing. We must to have proper altar in our life. Altar speaks of many meanings in the Bible. But for our context, if you see altar speaks about the prayer. Abraham, the man of altar. Abraham. So if you see the life of Abraham. Lord called him. And he don't know where he is going. He left all his kitchen and his father's house land. He came to, came out and he is proceeding where the Lord shows to him. In the book of Genesis, chapter twelve, you go and read in Ephom. Even twelve to four, twenty two, if you see, he built a five altar in four places. First, the place Moreh. Moreh, the place Moreh. Second one, the two altar he built, that is the place Bethel. Second place, he built two. He built two, that is the altar in Bethel, second place. And the third place is. Mamre. Mamre, he also built the altar. And the fourth place is the place Moriah. There is the greatest sacrifice of Abraham in his life. His only son, he born in the age hundred, he was ready to offer unto God because God asked that. These four places you meditate with the meaning and other things, really you can learn many spiritual meaning in that. Altar is the place of slather. The place where we are slain and where we are slaughtering the animal. So second one, if you see, what is the altar means, altar is the place where it will empty the things. Not only slanting the animal upon that altar. They will make into pieces and they will burn it whereby we will get only ashes. Everything will be empty out. So altar is the place which make us empty. And according to the Matthew's Gospel, chapter five twenty three. Jesus said, the mountain sermon one thing. If you remember, I have had a nurse or an immediate to my brother. What I have to do? I have to leave my sacrifice, everything near by the, besides the altar and I have to reconcile our peace with him. After that I have come and offered. So what is the altar? Altar is the place of peace or reconciliation. So such a altar should be in our life. If you have such altar. Then really we will enjoy the peace of God in our life. Suppose if you don't have such altar in your life. Cannot enjoy the peace of God in our life. So when the book of Hebrews, I hope. Hebrews, chapter thirteen, verse ten says, we have an altar. Thirteen ten. What you are seeing here? We have an altar. What for the altar? Daily we have to go there. Daily we have to empty ourselves. Then only Christ will display through my life. You have altar in your life? How is your altar in your life? It is in proper condition or broken condition. This year, what the Lord is expecting, through this motto, we must to have the altar, proper altar in our life. And each and every day, every moment, we got to go to the altar and you got to empty yourself, slay yourself. If you don't have the altar in your life. You cannot enjoy the peace of God in your life. So beloved, this year you take the decision, Lord, this year I will maintain properly the altar which is given in my life. In the Old Testament, we can say that is the altar. But the New Testament, we don't have the altar. But instead of the what altar, what is there in the New Testament? What is there? Cross is there. Which one slay us? Which one slay us? Cross, daily we have to carry our cross. Daily we have to maintain the cross activity in our life. Whenever he come to the cross. It will slay us, it will slay us. That's what Galatians, Galatians, chapter two, verse twenty four says like that. What are you saying, anyone read? What are you saying? I am crucified with Christ. Now not I. Christ is living in me. So whenever we come to the cross in our life. We will be crucified in that. We will be crucified. My thought maybe. My worldly things maybe. My flesh maybe. My proud maybe. So my thought life maybe. All the things need to be crossed on the cross, nailed on the cross. But what will be? If I die, if I cross means what will be, what will be remain in me, Christ will be remain. Unless you crucified, Christ's life will never flow in your life. So prayer, prayer, what it speaks of, it is empty years, it is empty years. What is the real meaning of the prayer? When we are praying. Everything is left over, everything is impossible to me, that time only we are praying, Lord, you are, you are, we are going to the Lord for prayer. So many times what you are saying, it is possible me, I can do, I have this one, I have talent, I have power. With that, we are trying totally utterly will be failure. So what is the prayer? Total dependence in our inability. Total depends on, depends upon the God's ability and we are in our inability condition. That is the real meaning of the prayer. Lord, it is possible to you. It is, you are the able God. You can do all things, whatever you are going to perform in my life. Nothing can hinder your activities in my life. Whatever you decided, you can push, proceed, you can do. Such a ability God, such a potential God you are. When we depend totally upon the God, then that is the real meaning of God. So what is the meaning of the prayer? So totally we are, that is nothing in the sight of the God and we are extremeing, Lord is in our life. Chapter one. Verse twenty. Colossians one twenty. What you are seeing here? We having made peace through the blood of his cross by him to reconcile all the things unto himself. Cross made reconciliation with God. Reconciliation. So such a cross need to play important role in our life. It has to play a important place in our life. The cross is not in our life. Alter is not in our life. You cannot enjoy the real peace of God in our life. Prayer, life is very, very important. So such a prayer we have to give importance. The early morning, we meditate about even the second promise of this only also. Psalm one not seven says, prayer, prayer, we cry unto the Lord, we cry unto the Lord. Crying unto the Lord is nothing but praying unto the God. One English beautiful hymn is there. What a friend, him, him. What a friend we have in Jesus. How many of you know that one? They are the scriptures, they are the script. We can sing anything, okay. So what a friend we have in Jesus. So in this what he says. Every verse, that is a verse end with, everything we take into God in prayer. Our sins maybe. Our griefs maybe. Painful, painful conditions maybe. Weakness maybe. Our infirmities maybe. Everything we have to take into God in prayer. Because he is our friend. He will carry all the things on behalf of us. The background of writing this hymn also. So that also one of the beautiful stories that. Only few minutes I will tell and I will close. Joseph Screeven. He only composed this song, it says. He was born in tenth September eighteen nineteen. He born in Ireland. And his parents also financially, they are enough to afford and giving wonderful educational opportunity for his son. Since they were financially sound, they were enrolled again in Trinity College Dublin. Where he graduated with bachelor degree. And when he was a young man in Ireland, he got a perfect, he was perfect of a great citizen with a high ideal and notable aspiration. He was a good, that is a citizen in that place. And when he was leading such a life in his life. He fell in love with one young lady who were eager to spend his lifetime with her. However, on the day before his wedding, the lady or the girl, when she was crossing one river in his horse, she fell down in the river and she went inside the water. On the river, born, B A double N, born, when she was crossing on the bridge, from his horse she fell down and he dove into the water. And the opposite, the shore, this Joseph was observing all those things. Tomorrow is the marriage, tomorrow is the marriage. Today she died. That also in front of his eyes. See, he felt very bad. And with the effort of the overcoming from that situation. He, he became to wandering here and there. And in this age twenty five, by his wandering, he went to Canada. And the fourth hope, the place fourth hope, Canada he went. And there also, if you see, he was doing some of the social work in that place. He was tutoring to the local schools and free of cost, he was teaching something and encouraging the people who are studying in that place. As he was teaching in that tutorial. Once again, he fall with love with a wonderful, beautiful lady. Again, they fixed one day to marry also. Before his wedding day. The same girl suffered with pneumonia and died it seems. So finally he became a mad. He don't know what to do, he don't know what to do. Again, he was wandering here and there. And he started doing the social work that is, he is helping to the orphan people and the poor people like that. And the same Joseph also fall into the sickness and one day he went to bed. The same Joseph fall into sickness and he went to the bed. Into inwardly griefs and sorrows. He did not open his mouth. One day, his friend came to visit him when he was in the bed. He did not open his mouth, he did not open his eyes also because outwardly sickness is there, inwardly more than that griefs, sorrows and issues. But his friend started to sing this song at sins. What a friend we have in Jesus. That song when he was singing. Slowly, the Joseph, he opened his eyes. And when he was, the song is saying like this, all your griefs, all your sorrows, all your painful conditions, all your infirmities, all your weakness, the friend is the who will carry you. By that song, by the hymn, his spirit and all quicken it seems. So what is that, everything, there is a, he mentioned everything into God by prayer. All the things, if you take, your griefs maybe, sorrow maybe, infirmities maybe, weakness maybe, everything, if you take to God in prayer, definitely God will give peace in our life. So second one, how can we receive the peace, how can the peace maybe remain in our life? By prayer. Let us daily submit ourselves, let us bring daily our life under the altar.